Okay, so we'll continue with the meeting. And thank you, Judge, for coming out tonight.
You're very welcome.
We'll start with the salute to the flag. Everybody would be seeing the flag.
Let's please.
Let me say to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Chenoweth, would you please throw the roll?
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Dr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Nobody has signed up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment at this time? Okay. Moving on, I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to kind of highlight the way this is going to go.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, the board will, under the tutelage of the temporary present, call for nominations for someone to serve as president. Each member can nominate one candidate to fill the position. Nominations do not need to be seconded. However, a member has to accept the nomination. When there appears to be no further nominations, there will be a motion to close nominations and take a vote. The vote will be by roll call. The members will identify the individual for whom they are voting. When a person gets a majority of the board, that person will be elected president and will then run the meeting. Obviously, a person may vote for whomever they choose among those individuals nominated. They do not have to vote for the person they nominated. No one may abstain. With those rules, Mr. Kraus, you may call for nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So at this time, I'll call for nominations for president to serve for a term of one year.
I'd like to make a nomination for Bill Kraus, president.
I would like to nominate Lisa Walters.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close the nominations. And I will make...
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Do that in the form of a motion to close the nominations.
He needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Very. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Nine zero.
Ms. Chenoweth, do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Lisa Walters.
Mr. Cormac?
William Kraus.
Mrs. Cullen?
Bill Kraus.
Mrs. Dolan?
Mrs. Walters.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Lisa Walters.
Mr. Kraus?
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Kraus.
Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Kraus.
Mrs. Walters?
Mr. Kraus.
Okay.
Mr. Kraus, as president, you may conduct the collections for vice president. The same methodology would be followed.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. I will open the floor for nominations for vice president to serve for a term of one year. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to make a nomination for Joan Cullen to be vice president.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Walters.
Can I second the nomination on the record?
There's no need to second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. And if you would...
A motion.
Oh, I need a... I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes nine zero.
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Lisa Walters.
Mr. Cormac?
Joan Cullen.
Mrs. Cullen?
Joan Cullen.
Mrs. Dolan?
Mrs. Cullen.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Lisa Walters.
Mr. Kraus?
Joan Cullen.
Mr. Rice?
Joan Cullen.
Dr. Thompson?
Joan Cullen.
Mrs. Walters?
Lisa Walters.
Okay. So we have our president and vice president. Onto the president's report. And I have nothing I've prepared tonight, other than thank you all for your... for your confidence in me and that we continue to do the work that we've been doing. Okay? And with that, I will move it on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I too would like to thank and congratulate the few officers, as well as the five board members who were sworn in tonight. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Gerhardt to his first official meeting.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and welcome tonight from this standpoint. Board members, you have some options that will be moved forward. The pictures will be on the screen behind you if you'd like to turn around and view them there, or they are still in the administrative content if you prefer to have that on your screen for the superintendent's report. Just a lot of wonderful events that have happened over the last few weeks with the holidays. So first, just a huge shout out to the cast and crew of the play Clue. And so they had a stage performance, did three different performances. It was thrilling and hilarious. It involved more than 50 students and played to really full houses all three nights. So bravo to the class and to the cast and crew of Clue. Next, just want to highlight our orchestra concert, 'Tis the Season. Concert season is coming. So this was the first one. The Penridge High School Concert Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra, and Alternative String Ensembles, which was an all-student-run group, gave an excellent performance a couple weeks ago. Congratulations to all the students, as well as their orchestra teacher, Ms. Gorilla. For those of you who are music lovers, the next two weeks are full of concerts at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We encourage you to check out her calendar. If you're looking for a recommendation, I'd like to highlight the high school choir candlelight concert, which is on December 18th and begins at 7:00 P.M. Next is our harvest breakfast. Harvest breakfast is a wonderful tradition here at Penridge. It brings students, family, and because it's done right before Thanksgiving, a lot of alumni are able to come back if they're home from college or gathering with their family for the Thanksgiving. And so it's right before the beginning of Thanksgiving break. It's a wonderful job done by student council and nutritional services, and you can see by the pictures behind me, there was a lot of fun, a lot of neat generational conversation, as well as a lot of good carbs that were consumed that morning. Next is highlighted on more food. Next is Ms. Rhyme and her Thanksgiving. So for those of you who don't know, Ms. Rhyme runs the Penridge Nursery School. So there are three different settings. So it's students, it's a class where they learn early childhood education and have a class of about 10 to 15 preschool students who come in for an hour and a half a day during their shift. And so Mrs. Rhyme, with the help of parent volunteers and her students, put together a full Thanksgiving dinner, had all the fixings, and she made 60 pounds of turkey. So we love to see our students and staff connecting that way. It was neat to see all the parents that were in the preschoolers just loving it and performing their cute little songs. It was a neat way to start Friendsgiving and Thanksgiving week. Next was the Thanksgiving Day game. Spoiler alert, we won. Thanksgiving morning, it was just a neat tradition to have the Penridge Rams and the Quakertown Panthers petty in the 90th Annual Thanksgiving Game. Penridge has dominated the 90 years. I believe we just had our 58th win of the 90, if I checked the trophy. Special treat this year, the WIP, we had won their Thanksgiving Turkey Bowl, so they were here to broadcast the game live from Helman Field at Grandview Stadium, and the marching band was absolutely amazing. It was a great morning with alumni, families, and community members coming together to celebrate the wonderful traditions. I'd also like to share, this year, we had a senior, M.J. McFellin, who we had asked to make a hype video to highlight some of the past games. And so his intent was to make this both a celebration for Penridge and for Quakertown as a... leading up to the game. I just wanted to show it to you if you didn't get a chance to see it. So can we play that, Ms. Cooper? Thank you. Leading up to the game, Ms. Chenoweth and Ms. Cooper had led a social media blitz to look for photographs and videos. And so this, some of this was Penridge stock photo and video that we had for multiple games, but also from community members. And so it was neat, the class of '85 had sent in multiple videos to see from over the years. So a huge thank you to M.J. for that. And last, but certainly not least, at the beginning of the year, I had an opportunity to speak with all of our staff. And so I picked a theme for the year, and this year, the theme had to do with impact. We talked a lot about the power that an adult or a child can have on another individual. We talked about what that looks like in the classroom, what that looks like if you're a classmate, what that looks like if you're a support staff member or a coach, and how powerful that impact could have. A couple weeks ago, I received an email from a parent, and it immediately made me think about that impact, and it demonstrated perfectly what I was talking about. And I had asked that parent and her daughter if they would come tonight to share that impact with you, because I wanted you to hear it from them, just in terms of the stories that we have about our students, as well as our teachers. And so I want to welcome Ms. Nicole Piotrowitz. How do I do?
Good.
And her daughter Morgan, who is a third grader at Dibler. So if they would come up, and the microphone there, if you just press the little post-it note, it should turn it red. There you go. And if you'd share with us.
Morgan started swim lessons at Menlo over the summer, and Julian was one of her instructors. And I had let Julian know early on that Morgan has a pretty severe anxiety issues. When I saw it was a boy that was going to be giving her instructions, no offense to Julian, I thought it was either going to go one of two ways. Either she was going to eat him alive, or she was... he wasn't... he was going to challenge her too hard and break her. I have to say, I was very pleasantly surprised. He... I might start crying. He worked with her for those two weeks, and I've never seen her so relaxed with an individual. He pushed her just the right amount. When she would have a panic attack, he would talk to her. He was calm. He was kind. If he saw her around the pool, outside of swim lessons, he always addressed her by name, always gave her like a fist bump, and always chatted and joked around with her for a few minutes. Because of him, we decided to do the PAC Swim Team, because he had put so much time and effort into those swim lessons with Morgan, above and beyond what I'd seen other instructors do. And so we signed her up for the swim lessons, and I had her attend a polo clinic, and during the polo clinic, she had a panic attack. And it was... it was pretty bad. And Julian caught my eye from across the pool, and he didn't even hesitate. He just dove in the pool, swam across, jumped out, came over to her, and didn't leave her side for the rest of the clinic. And because he was able to speak with her, and he was familiar, and he was kind, and really understanding and accepting of her, she was able to continue through the clinic, and she had a really great time. For Morgan, she just... she's a very sweet child. She has very big emotions, and Julian accepts her for who she is. He's kind to her. He's compassionate with her. He's empathetic with her. And I've never seen anyone outside of a very few individuals be able to manage her in a panic attack the way that he has. He has really been a blessing in our life, and I'm very grateful at the opportunity for Morgan to know him. And at eight years old, when you're having a panic attack, it's the scariest moment of your life. And outside of me, there's not very many people that are able to bring her back to center, and he is one of them that can. And for me, that alleviates such a pressure to always have to be there. There's somebody else that she can trust to help her in those moments. And it's... he has probably not done anything that he wouldn't do, but for us, it's meant everything. It's meant so much to be able to have that trust in another individual. So what do you want to say?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I felt it important in the climate of today that something positive be shared with individuals.
So this whole time, they've been talking about Penridge Junior and a member of the Boys' Waterball Team. So Julian Artega, would you come on up? Could you be congratulated? Thank you. What do you want to share? Is there anything you want to share? Do it into the microphone, because Mom and Dad are recording.
I... I'll be honest, I did not prepare anything. Honestly, I'm just happy to be able to know that I'm not the worst coach. And honestly, it really is a blast to come in. And then, honestly, Morgan is one of the more enthusiastic kids on the team. She's always ready to go. And even if I'm having a really bad day, and I really just don't want to have to stay at the pool another hour, I can never have a bad time when she's there to cheer me up, and she's always revving to go. And honestly, I never had a second thought about helping her, anything like that. Honestly, just her being her makes it worth for me.
Thank you.
Thank you for the T-shirt. Thank you for sharing. Julie, thank you. I give you a T-shirt. You want to go out there where your T-shirt's up, and then we'll get a picture. And then we'll get the families, but you two first, since you're the stars. All right, Ms. Cooper will take care of you.
Ready, one, two, three? One, two, three? Awesome. Thank you.
Let's get the proud families in here. Right, Julian's parents, come on up. Sister, are you welcoming? Can you make sure of that? Yeah, of course you do. I should have brought another shirt. Right, now come on up. Yeah, come on up. Ms. Cooper will take a picture if you want. Do you have your... Okay.
Grab the other end.
All right. Three at eight.
One more time, but thank Morgan and Julian for being here.
Yes.
Thank you. So that's why we do this, and that's why we love this job. So Julian, Morgan, thank you guys so much. Right, thanks for coming. And that is the superintendent's report. Kraus, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the student liaison report.
All right. So good evening. My name is Ada McGinnis. I'm a junior at the high school. And as Dr. Bolton said, we had our harvest breakfast last week, which is a great event that brings together students, staff, and the community the day right before Thanksgiving break. And if you were able to come and enjoy it, or you'd like to experience it, we have a similar event called the Spring Breakfast right before Easter break later in the year. We also had the week before winter break, we're having a candy team handout for all students and staff members to get them in the holiday spirit and spirit days as well. And that's about it right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A and B.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or concerns by board members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries nine zero. And we'll move into the facilities report. The facilities committee did meet on November 12th, and I have one motion to approve the selection of Reynolds Engineering as a qualified energy services company to implement capital improvements in the school facilities, as well as to reduce energy and operational costs in facilities and infrastructure, as well as to direct the superintendent and solicitor to negotiate an appropriate contract for execution by the school board at a subsequent meeting.
A second?
Seconded by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. Concerns, questions by board members? Yes, yes and none?
I just want to simply explain what this is in terms of the motion. If you remember, we put out an RFP for an energy service company or an ESCO, that you'll sometimes hear it, be as part of our engineering and capital works projects. And so those RFPs were collected prior to Thanksgiving. Those were shared with the board for their consideration tonight. That's why the agenda item had an open-ended for the board to be able to decide who they wanted to nominate for that. Please. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Bolton. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. Concerns or questions by board members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
I just have to say, not being a part of that, those conversations, and just being here, I'll just... I have to abstain from that.
Okay. I retract that. It's eight... Eight zero one. Okay, one extension, two in favor. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for January 7th. Moving on to the finance committee, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The finance committee met on November 12th, and I would like to make a motion to approve addendums to the five-year Title I and Title II-A non-public agreements.
A seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Good questions, concerns by board members? All in favor?
I'm sorry. Sorry. I'd like to also clarify this, just simply because whenever there's an addendum to a contract, I want to explain why we're adding one to the contract. So these are contracts that were approved in 2018 by the board. The Department of Federal Programs have changed their length of terms. At the time they were approved, they were approved for five-year terms. The Department of Federal Programs has changed their regulations to only allow for three-year terms. So all school districts are required to go back and adjust the end of the contract. So the 18th... 2018 is still the beginning, but these addendums are the exact same contracts, but they now will end in 2021 instead of 2023. So there's no change to the original contract except for the ending date.
Thank you for that clarification. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there other questions or concerns by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries nine zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract, the contract with Music Theater International for the South Middle School Spring Musical.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or concerns by board members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020.
Okay. Personnel committee, Mrs. Walters.
I you.
All right. I would like to have two motions tonight. A motion to increase the substitute nursery rate to $20.71 per hour to... or slash $175 per day.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Concerns or questions by board members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Okay. And the second item is a motion to approve the termination of employee number 1146.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
I was like, I got two items and I'm done, right?
The next personnel meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 13th.
Thank you. Policy committee, Dr. Thompson.
Because this evening, we have four policies for final approval. I'll make a motion to approve the following policies. Policy 004 for membership, policy 333 professional development, policy 709 building security, and policy 805.2, school police officers.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or concerns by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have eight, zero, and one extension.
The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 6th.
Thank you. Upper box vote tech, Mrs. Dolan.
Sure, thank you. I was actually not at the meeting on November 18th. Mr. Rice was there. Would you care to give us a synopsis of what happened?
I can. There was a lot of great acknowledgements of student achievements. As far as any of the other committees, they were standard protocol, but the most recognized was the students. There was another group of exceptional students that were recognized. So once again, we continue to produce great students out of the school. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
The only thing I can add is that December 7th is our Breakfast with Santa Claus. The community is welcome. That's this coming Saturday. Nine to eleven is $8 for adults, $5 for ages children, for children three to nine. If you've never been out to the Daxum for breakfast, I highly recommend it. It's pretty good. Thank you. And we meet on December 19th.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dolan. Is there any old business? Seeing none? New business? Under new business, I have two items that were brought to the table tonight by Mr. Miller. First is a motion to approve the power of attorney and contingent fee agreement between Penridge School District and the Beglin Carlin and Mandino LLP Law Firm, as well as Wagstaff and Cartmel LLP Firm in a final form acceptable to the district solicitor.
Seconded.
Seconded by... was that Mrs. Cullen?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions or concerns by board members?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear for the members of the audience, there are several local districts who have already joined litigation involving vaping and electronic e-cigarette manufacturers, which again, as Dr. Bolton will tell you, is one of the two or three biggest health problems that we confront in the school district. There are significantly emerging body of law regarding whether or not the manner in which these products are sold and the health conditions that they produce among our students are harming both our students and the district. This motion and this agreement allows... This motion and this agreement allows a law firm to represent the district's interests on a contingent fee basis and form. Ultimately, that will be approved by myself along with the rules, in conjunction with the rules of professional conduct for lawyers. The district's responsibility is limited at their support of this lawsuit, and their engagement in this lawsuit is again, is as a potential member of a class or contingent fee, action against these manufacturers in pursuit of recovery for the costs that we have incurred, among other things, for potential damages to students and to our educational mission. So with that explanation.
I'd like to provide some of the district context in terms of the need for this. The Surgeon General of the United States Public Health Services has put out a lot of data and made lots of recommendations in this area. They did a survey between 2017 and 2018 and found a rise, an increase of 78% among high school students for the use of e-cigarettes. It rose from 11.7% in 2017 to 20.8% in 2018. In 2018, they found that more than 3.6 million youth, including 20% of high school students and over 5% of middle school students, were currently using e-cigarettes, and found that nicotine exposure during adolescence can significantly impact learning, memory, and attention. In Penridge specifically, the 2017 Pennsylvania Youth Survey, which is student-reported data, but yet significant to us in terms of tracking trends, in 2017, 37% of our 12th graders said that they had used an e-cigarette product within the last 30 days. 30% of our 10th graders and 9% of our 8th graders reported the same. This year, as we've tracked in the high school, it is the number-one discipline issue that is faced at the high school level. Currently to date, we've had 24 incidents at the high school, and those are the ones that we've caught. And so that means approximately two times a week, there is a student who has a vape on campus somewhere. That doesn't count students who use it outside of the school building or use it at home. Those are just the ones that, from a discipline standpoint, that we are using. As Mr. Miller said, it, along with student mental health and anxiety, are the two most significant health pieces that we battle on a daily basis at the high school level with our students.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other questions or concerns by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so motion carries eight zero with one abstention. Okay, second motion is to approve the resolution authorizing litigation against manufacturers, distributors, and sellers of electronic cigarettes and vaping products. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries eight zero with one abstention. All right, thank you. Before I move on to public comment, on behalf of the board, I would like to publicly thank Mrs. Venus Clemmons for her leadership over the past 12 months. Mrs. Venus Clemmons has given countless hours of her time, energy, and passion to the district and the students, truly cares about the administration, staff, and especially the students. So on behalf of the board, thank you, Mrs. Venus Clemmons. Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Except the microphone, the remain and municipality?
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. First of all, congratulations to Ryan, who's the new student board member, and congratulations to the new president, vice president. I just have a quick question about, probably Dr. Bolton, if you can answer, on the videos, on the YouTube page. I noticed there were no November videos up, and I know, you know, it takes time to upload and get everything set up, but Ms. Furlong, who does a really good job getting hers up, I was hoping maybe we could improve her SLA a little bit and see if we can get those up in a matter of a couple of days. I think it's really important for people to engage and understand what's happening with the board when they can't get out to a meeting like this. I mean, look at the attendance tonight. So if you guys need to, is it possible for you to get them up in a few days at all? Thank you.
Matt? Mr. Foster, thank you for the question. And it really is our intention that those videos, since they are intended for people where we have action items at the board meeting, to go to review them. Before that, the hard part of those would be the meetings that happen the week before the board meetings. We do sometimes have committees that are less than a week before a board meeting, and so those are very, very difficult. We do attempt to do that in five to 10 school days, and so over the course of one to two weeks, although in November, we didn't hit that mark, and we knew that. They are being prepped and finalized, and they should be up this week, but it is something that we do understand is important, and we'll continue to work to be better with that. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Announcements. An executive session preceding tonight's meeting was held to discuss legal matters and personnel matters. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 27th. Thank you all, have a great holiday. We'll see you next year. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine zero.